What is up, Unity community? Welcome on into another official livestream here on the Unity Twitch page and Unity YouTube page as well. My name is Jackson. I'm one of your community managers and I am responsible for all of the livestream content that you will have here on these channels. Of course, it seems like, I don't really know what happened because I was seeing videos. You apparently were seeing an empty chair. That's what I'm seeing in the chat, including my team and your team. I don't know what happened, but it's great to be here with you. We are going to be joined again by Team Unity and we will be diving into our Global Game Jam project. We, of course, if you were here on Tuesday, were working through the brainstorming and whiteboard stages, trying to get everything ready to go for the team. And they've been working hard behind the scenes in between these streams, getting everything in place. And now, we're ready to show off a couple of very important things that we want to get ready for you all. We will be diving into creating our main playable character as well as creating some VFX for that astronaut as well. So Unity community, I'd love to hear from you. How the heck are you? Welcome on in. Thank you so much for being here. Where in the world are you tuning in from? If you are watching live, please be aware. This is a conversation we would love to hear from you. We understand that a great deal of our community enjoys just hanging out with this on in the background and we totally respect that. We love that you're here, one way or the other. But we would love to hear from you. Just pop in, let us know that you're here and then recede into the shadows. Of course, I have just put a survey in the chat as well. This survey has gone out a couple of times and for everybody, it's a little bit about you, a little bit about what type of content you enjoy and would like to see. So please go in and fill that out. It'll take you less than three minutes. It's four questions and it will help guide the livestream content that we have here. If you were watching later as a VOD on YouTube, check out that navigation bar down at the bottom and you can skip to any of these sections of this stream that appeal to you most. But again, welcome on in, everybody. We've got Malek 3D, The Bull, we got Fredo, everybody, welcome, welcome, welcome. So good to have you all. Thank you again for being here. On the Twitch side, we got Sleepy Space Sloth, we got Boba Fett and we got Jelang Tree. Welcome on in, Jennifer. Good to see you all. I hope everyone is having the best Thursday. We've got Joy, not in Canada, although excited to be here. S Santana, Santan, Santana, see, got it. I'm really good at names today, you guys. I'm really happy that everybody's here. And I think without further ado, we bring the gang in and then we get everybody situated, ready to go. So we're gonna prep and we are bringing everybody in. Welcome on in, everybody. How's it going? We got the team back together again. We have Sarah Joy and James. How's everybody doing?
Good, you know.
Feeling good.
It's gonna be a chaotic day, but I think that's what everybody is here for. So yeah, I don't know if you noticed, but somebody called out the fact that you showed off your ability to become invisible. So, yeah, by the bag, you're an X-Man.
I'm not really sure what happened. What were you guys seeing? Cause I literally saw the video roll.
It was just video feed of your empty chair and I thought this was a gag where like you were gonna hop up and be like, hi, everyone. I was waiting for it and then it never came.
I don't know how it happened. I was seeing a video and I was like, great, everything's set. I'm gonna go fill my water bottle, came back and I'm, there's 11 messages in the private chat. I was gone for 30 seconds. 11 messages in the private chat and I see weird stuff that I don't understand in the Twitch and YouTube chat from everybody. I was like, what's going on here? And then I'm looking at the screen, there's a video playing. I'm like, good. And the messages in the private chat, if you guys don't mind me putting everybody on in public here. It was question marks from Joy, from Sarah. Joy says, where's Jackson? Sarah says, chair cam. And then Jack, our producer says, I'll fix it. No one tell Jackson that he broke everything. So thank you for trying to preserve my.
It is a great chair.
Yeah, I mean, I worked really hard for this chair. So everybody, if we could pretend that didn't happen, that would make me really happy.
Pretend what didn't happen?
Exactly.
What are you talking about?
And I edit these videos for the YouTube after anyway, so no one's gonna notice. No one's gonna notice, but.
We're gonna start right here.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Ready, we'll do the new intro. Just give me one second to compose myself. Hey, everybody, welcome to the livestream. We're joined by Team Unity here. Of course, we've got Sarah Joy and James, who have all been working hard on Global Game Jam 2025. If anyone missed last stream and they don't know who we are, if they've missed all of the streams, if this is their first stream that they've come to because they saw us say, hey, we got a game jam thing happening, come and hang out. What do they need to know about you? Who are you? What do you do? And what's a game that inspires you? Sarah, we'll start with you and we'll go clockwise around the horn.
Um, hi, everyone. My name is Sarah. I'm a content producer here at Unity. Um, I work on the Pro Training Team, professional training. So essentially I create video tutorials for our professional subscribers, usually people in industries like automotive engineering, but we also do a lot of gaming content as well. So if you're interested, you could check us out, protraining.unity.com. And a game that has been inspiring me lately. I've been playing a lot of the Persona 3 remake, really good. Oh, the visuals are amazing. The story is as good as ever, amazing characters, love it. What a game.
For me, I've never been able to get into the Persona series, but the UI, the visual presentation, the art, and it's like, I don't need to really get into the game deep to understand just like the beauty that that game possesses.
And the music, especially of Persona 5.
I've gotten into Metaphorie Fantagio lately and I know that's like the same, it's like a spiritual successor, some are saying. And I see everything there. Yeah, 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 I totally get it. Like the UI, the overlays, the interface, all of that is beautiful and the music's exceptional. So very, very cool. I appreciate it. Sarah, welcome back to the stream. We've got Joy in the house. Um, I don't, I'd like to say our fearless leader. I don't really know how you guys did read up roles, but Joy was.
Joy is definitely the leader.
Joy was Nick Fury in assembling the team and sent, and I just, I said, Joy, who do we need? Who are we getting? Let's go. Um, so Joy, walk everyone through who you are, what you do here and what game inspires you?
Yeah, okay. So hello, everybody. My name is Joy Horvath. I'm a senior program manager here at Unity and I lead the Elevate program. The entire point of Elevate is to help our users get their first job in games. I'm getting pretty good at that introduction.
That's true.
That's a good one.
Yeah, it's like get that little spot. Eventually I'll be able to record it, just push the button and just mime my way through. Uh, but game that expired, uh, expired me. Game.
This game killed me, man.
It, I'm gonna say, uh, I'm gonna go back a couple of months to the Silent Hill 2 remake. Um, totally inspired me because like, there are a lot of people that thought that Looper Team wasn't gonna be able to pull it off, but man, did they ever. It's, I think it's a testament to like, how close to perfection you can get with a remade game. Like Looper Team really demonstrated that they understood the source material, they had a deep love for it and they knew how to respect the original while bringing it into the modern era. I think it was an incredible work and I'm so inspired and also just so dedicated to anything else that they're gonna come out with. And for Silent Hill fans, rumors about them working on one in three, like, I don't know if I believe it, but man, do I want it to happen. So fingers crossed.
The official stance of Unity is that we cannot confirm nor deny any of the rumors surrounding remakes for Silent Hill.
Well, yeah, yeah, it's official. I mean, they, they use unreal, which is fine. So we have nothing to do with it, but like I, in my heart, I want them to do it.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Well, Joy, welcome back again. Thank you so much for being here. And last but not least, of course, we've got James. James returned last stream after a lengthy hiatus. We're thrilled to have you here, both on the stream and on the team for the jam. James, who are you? What do you do? And what's a game that inspires you?
Well, thank you for that lovely introduction. Hi, everyone. I'm James Turnage-Lannan. I am the lead content production on the Unity Learn website. So if you use Unity Learn and see our tutorials, my team works on all of those lovely, lovely bits of knowledge. Uh, so hopefully it's helped you. Yeah, and I've been with Unity since 2017. Um, and yeah, doing this job for the past five years. Um, so it's been great. A game that has inspired me, um, I'm gonna go to my personal game of the year last year. My personal game of the year last year was Astro Bot. Yeah, I, so Astro Bot to me was, is everything that a video game should be. And what that should be is fun. Like a game should be fun to play. And it's just so funny and whimsical and, you know, obviously it has the nostalgia factor to it as well. But like, I'm a huge Nintendo fanboy and you can tell Nintendo's inspiration is all over that game. And even just like if you watch the game awards and you saw the speech, um, them getting the game of the game of the year award, they didn't necessarily say Nintendo, but they heavily alluded to that, like Nintendo was the inspiration for this game. So, uh, yeah, that is a game like every time, even, even for this game, uh, that, that we're working on today. One of the main things that I always think about when I'm coming up with game ideas is just like, what makes it fun? And if I, yeah, and if I, I can't find it, then it's not a good idea. Like first and foremost, when you're playing a game, you have to enjoy it. And so, yeah, that is, that is my pick.
I'm right there with you. Astro Bot, my game of the year last year, I went and got that platinum trophy. I played all of it. I absolutely loved it. And you're absolutely right. It felt like every step of the way, they said, what is the most fun possible choice we can make here? And it resonated throughout the entire game. I saw a quote from a spokesperson at Nintendo recently. There was something, and I'm paraphrasing, but something to the effect of Astro Bot almost bested us at our own game. And it was like, I mean, it's right there. You're right. The inspiration is all the way through it. Um, but yeah, did they take it and one-up it? Maybe pretty close. I mean, especially for Sony where they don't really have that same presence in the same genre space, pretty impressive.
And I just, I, I hope that it inspires Nintendo. Like competition, competition is good and Sony definitely now has, you know, that 3D platformer that has the chance to rival, you know, a 3D Mario game. So yeah, I hope the next 3D Mario game is, you know, comes to, to take its crown back.
Yeah, for me, very similar thoughts around Pal World, hopefully pushing Pokemon to do anything new with the genre or like at least step it up to like where we are with the rest of the games industry. I love Pokemon, but my goodness, you wanna hear me ranting?
Couple things that I don't foresee Pokemon taking inspiration from.
Not all of them, not all of them. But the fact that like it successfully created an open world and the pals were wandering in space and you could bring them along and have them run alongside you or ride or fly. And it's like, okay, maybe, maybe there's a lot that we can do there to, to push Pokemon in a, in a, in a different direction. But I digress. Again, I want to welcome in everybody watching live. If you're in the Twitch and YouTube chats, thank you so much for being here with us. We are paying attention and of course I want to say hey to everybody. On the YouTube side, we've got SpaghettiStrofiom, we got Danco Games, um, we got Hyper FX and Game Dev Saga. We got Dread Serpent and The Bull, of course. Great to see you all. Over on the Twitch side, we've got Sleepy Space Sloth, 3Yams and Picard is here. We got Wet Wiley and of course Jennifer Boba Fett. Everybody, thank you so much for hanging out. We are, of course, engaging and paying attention to the chat here. There may be a point later in the stream where we put something else to a little bit of a vote. So you guys will have an opportunity to perhaps influence this game or the team working on it. Last stream, we had an opportunity for everybody to jump in and eliminate two of the four game design options. So lots of really cool opportunities for those of you joining us live. If you're catching this later, uh, we are live every Thursday and occasional Tuesdays. So come and check it out. Uh, your most likely bet for finding the up-to-date schedule is on the YouTube channel, the live tab there where everything is marked for future events. Come and hang out. Wet Wiley says Astro Bot's so good, my son's first plat. I'm incredibly impressed because that last bonus secret level.
Yes.
It genuinely took me like three hours and I had to put it down in the middle because I was like, this game is so joyful. And even though I'm failing at this really challenging level, I'm still having fun, but I need to go take a lap and come back. It was really tough.
I had to take a break. When I came back, I was ready.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, gang, if you are participating in Global Game Jam 2025, which is live right now, we would love to hear, what are you working on? Tell us a little bit about it. And to help you, uh, Unity has put together a $1 quick start asset bundle just in time for Global Game Jam. Get a quick start bundle with $300 plus dollars of top art and tools for just $1. It is available January 20th through January 27th. Visit the link on screen or in chat for more details. Uh, and that's where we're at. So go and check that out. Uh, do yourself a favor, help yourself out there. But we're back and I feel like it would be a great time to catch everybody up on what we did last stream and what you guys have accomplished in the last almost 48 hours. So I know we have some plans here. It seems like we have a game design doc. It seems like we've got an inspiration slash mood board, which I'm excited for personally. Uh, you guys have been cooking. Again, we've kind of established the different roles on the team. I am mostly here to give you the platform to speak. I've not been working. You guys have been hard at work.
You've been helping tons.
I've been putting you, I gave you a Slack channel to communicate with each other.
No, you came up with the stuff. No, you were an important part of this team.
Yes, yes, you are.
Yes, thanks. I really appreciate it, but I didn't do anything in between streams, let's say that. So you're gonna catch me up just as much as you're catching everybody else up. Where is a good spot for us to start? Should we recap last stream and then dive into what you guys have been working on? Or will last streams work kind of flow, but if we just go into game design stuff?
I think we just, uh, we can do a brief recap and then where we left off.
Sounds good.
Last time on the stream.
There wasn't an empty chair in my apartment for even a moment of last week's stream. I was present 100% of the time. It was a magic trick. But on last week's stream, we assembled the team. We also have, not on screen today, we have a fourth member of the team, fifth member of the team, I suppose. Kirk, uh, who helped, uh, behind the scenes a little bit, but is doing his own thing at an actual game jam site in Carolina, if I'm not mistaken. Either way, um, so we agreed on a game design approach. There was a lot of brainstorming and whiteboarding, which was honestly super fun. I really enjoyed, uh, the creativity and the camaraderie, the teamwork in that moment. And we landed on our fourth game design opportunity or option, I suppose. Everybody else, um, in the Twitch chat hopped in and helped us vote and eliminate two. We picked option number four, which essentially with the theme of Global Game Jam being Bubble, we concocted this idea that you are a character who has a bubble as a home space. And we, we toyed with underwater. I think we ended up in sci-fi space. I think we ended up in space, but you have a bubble as safety and you are wandering away with your, from your bubble to find objects or people scattered through the darkness to return them to your home base in an effort to unify generations, which of course was the modifier, um, for the game jam as well. We agreed on a slightly maybe horror tone, if we can get to it, a lot of space exploration. James threw in a multiversal, uh, component, which was excellent. So every version or every person you encounter is a different version of you, either young or old or anywhere in between, which is very, very cool. Uh, the team agreed on a voxel style art with Joy taking the lead on that. There were, I believe, um, isometric viewpoints were, were what we kind of agreed upon there as well. So lots, um, accomplished in that first session. Again, I, I was around for crazy web game jam in November, but this is, I, I have relatively small, low levels of experience when it comes to game jams. I feel like we accomplished a ton in the first hour that we were around. Now I don't know if that's normal and maybe that happens every jam, but guys, I came off it feeling fired up. So yes, I'm very excited to hear more. Um, where did we leave off? And then what have you guys been able to accomplish in the meantime?
Yeah, so we left off there, um, and we agreed that we needed to lock in the game design idea. We needed to come away, um, knowing, coming to this stream, knowing exactly what our game is, so we can hit the ground running. And so we took, uh, yeah, uh, the last 24 hours to really just like hone in on what this game is, what are the mechanics? What do we need implemented in this game for it to work? Uh, and we put all of this information in a game design document and, uh, yeah, here's the, the, the design document and I can definitely walk through it. Um, before I do, Joy, Sarah, you wanna add anything?
I just wanted to shout out that James has been doing such an amazing job. This design document is super cool. I am so stoked for this. Sarah, what do you think?
James, you're a legend. This is crazy. I don't know. When I do game jams, I just, I just do it and it's so nice to finally have some organization and actually know what I'm supposed to be doing. This is a refreshing change.
I look at this and I look off to my, my vision meanders off to the right where there is the scroll bar for the document and just how small it is and how, implies how much work there is in this doc. And it makes me, uh, both impressed and overwhelmed.
James did a big think, let's just put it that way.
Big brain.
Thank you, thank you. Um, yeah, no, it was, and it was all a combination of just all of our brainstorming, especially during the last stream. Um, and it just like, yeah, it took everything we, we discussed and especially the whiteboard and kind of just like, it's the producer in me that also like wanted it just down on a document and organized so that everyone knows exactly what they're doing and everyone's aligned on what, uh, what exactly this game is. Uh, because that is definitely one thing for game jams where it, it can fail is that not everyone is aligned on what the game should be and everyone's kind of doing different things. And then when you try and put it all together, it just does not mesh well. And so I think it's super important to make sure that everyone is bought into the idea and everyone's aligned. And so you have a cohesive, uh, game that you're, you're creating. So yeah, with that said, yeah, let's definitely go through the design document. There has been, I know Jackson just kind of gave a bit of a recap as to like where we landed last stream, but there's definitely been some changes since then. Things have been a bit more refined, um, and detailed out. So I'll kind of just walk through it. So as you can see, we have a name for this game. The name is called The Tenebrus. And if, if you do not know what Tenebrus means, I didn't know when I, when I first heard the word, but it, I think it's very appropriate for our game. Tenebrus is basically, it's a synonym for darkness, the darkness. Yes, and it also has an, another meaning, or it's actually the name of the main enemy in our game. Just to recap, yeah, uh, the theme for the game jam is bubbles, uh, and our diversifier that we're using is unite generations. Yeah, so the overview, uh, so yeah, the genre, it's a sci-fi exploration with horror elements. Uh, the perspective is actually instead of 2.5D, we've decided it's gonna be a 2D top-down view. And so, yeah, uh, basically in this game, you, the player, you're tasked with just exploring the darkness of space in search of anything that will help you understand why you're here and how to restore this fading light that you're, you're within. And so, uh, yeah, as you venture out, you learn that you're not alone. There is a dark entity called The Tenebrus that devours light. And so as you're exploring, uh, space, you have to evade The Tenebrus. It, uh, it is attracted to light, um, but it can't enter into your safe zone. But you, as a player, you have access to, to light and you can shoot bubbles of light to distract it. And so, and you also have a boost. So as you're floating around in space, you can boost around, uh, both the boost and the bubble light are limited resources. And so your job is to essentially explore space and find these other astronauts to help you restore the fading light at your home base. And yeah, you, that's kind of just the, the core game loop. Um, is just, uh, essentially you leave your safety bubble zone, you explore the darkness of space. There are hazards, um, and most importantly, The Tenebrus is the only enemy and it's constantly just navigating around space, uh, kind of randomly. But if it's, if it, if it's in close proximity to you, it will start to chase after you. And so you have your boost to escape, um, but you also have the, the bubble light to, you can shoot it off into different areas of space so that it will go chase that instead of you. Yeah, and your job is to find these astronauts that are alone floating in space and bring them back to your safety bubble. And every time you bring them back to the safety bubble, the light that surrounds your safety zone expands. And so it lights up even more of the, the space so that you can, you can explore further out. But the further out you go, the more dangerous, uh, and more, uh, likely that The Tenebrus is around, uh, you know, the further out that you are from safety. And so you have to manage your, your boosts and your bubble supply because you have, like I said, there are limited resources and the further out you are, uh, you know, the, 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 the further from safety you are. And so you have to make sure you manage those resources that you have. And every time you go back into the bubble, the safety bubble, you are refilled. You know, your, your boost gets refilled and your, your bubble ammo gets refilled. So yeah, that's the core, core game loop. Uh, yeah, win condition, once you save, there's gonna be five astronauts that you have to save. Once you save all five of them, uh, then you win the game. You, you, the, the light, uh, um, essentially there's a blinding light that flashes and destroys The Tenebrus and you win. And then, yeah, we came up with all the different game systems that we need to make sure that, uh, is in the game in order for this to work. Uh, so yeah, we have like, you know, just the, the restart system, like when you die, um, or in the menu, when you click the restart button, making sure that you start at the beginning of the game. The safe zone system, so you know, there are different rules, like obviously The Tenebrus cannot enter the system. So you have to make sure that, you know, the, the nav mesh is not within it. And especially when the light expands, the nav mesh also starts to, to, to pull back so that, um, The Tenebrus can't go into the expanded area. Uh, yeah, when you go in, you know, you're, you're refilled with your boost and your ammo, uh, things like that. So yeah, and then there's the pathfinding system again, you know, uh, for The Tenebrus. And so it's kind of randomly, there's different points that will have, where The Tenebrus, when you're not around it, will just randomly go to different spots, kind of just slowly moving slowly. But once it, like I said, is in close proximity to you, uh, it will start to chase you and it move, moves a bit faster. And The Tenebrus, when it's chasing you, actually moves faster than you do at normal speed. So which is why you have to conserve your boost, because that's the only way to, to really escape it or to, to distract it using your, your bubble lights.
Cool.
Yeah, we need the save astronaut system, so we have to be able to keep track of how many astronauts we've saved. And, um, each, uh, astronaut you save correlates to how further out you can explore based on the light provided. I was also thinking that maybe you could still explore, even if the light reaches a certain point, you could still explore even further if you want. It's just gonna be really dark and you're not really gonna be able to see, uh, and it's just gonna be a bit more dangerous. Um, but I think giving players that freedom, if they want to be able to explore without having, like, I, I don't want them to be able to just, you know, if they don't want to follow the direct, like, oh, I have to get this astronaut first and then this one. Um, if they want to go straight for the last astronaut, all the way at the end, they could. It's just gonna be really dark and really dangerous to, to do that. Uh, but yeah, we have the boost system we need to, to implement, the light bubble system. So we, we think, we believe that, you know, as an ammo reserve, there'll be 10 bubbles that you can use. Um, and this could be something as we play test, maybe 10 is too much or too little, whatever. Um, and so, but also with the system, there's the idea, and maybe this is a stretch goal, uh, that when you shoot bubbles in one location, the same location multiple times, that bubble increases. And it, and it keeps the, The Tenebrus distracted for longer. As opposed to if it's just a small little bubble, maybe it keeps it distracted for two seconds. But if it, if you shoot like three bubbles in that space, maybe it distracts it for 10 seconds. So there's that. Uh, we also want a dynamic camera system so that, uh, the further away you are from the safe zone, the camera gets pulled back, uh, a bit each time to kind of just show the expanse of space and how much further you are away from, from safety. Yeah, and then the player controller, we have our movement. Um, you know, this is gonna be just a, a mouse and keyboard. So we're gonna use WASD for the player to move in, you know, up, down, left, right. Uh, the movement is acceleration based, you're in space. And so, you know, the longer you hold W, um, you slowly start moving up. But then there's a, there's a top speed where you, where you can move, um, yeah, at that top speed. And then obviously a space bar is your boost. And so the boost can either be tapped, so you gently, you move forward, um, just up at one pace fairly quickly. Or you can hold down the space bar to have it really drain your meter, but like you're moving very quickly. The shooting mechanic will have a crosshair on. The shooting mechanic will have a crosshair on screen that is controlled by the mouse. And so wherever your player is, um, you can just like, yeah, move the mouse cursor around the screen. And wherever you click is where the bubble light will, will appear. So it's not like, it doesn't go just, uh, uh, a predetermined distance. Or maybe it does. Um, but basically wherever you have your cursor, your, your mouse cursor is where that bubble will go.
So it's like placing it, it shoots and places it as opposed to sends it on an indefinite path in that direction.
Absolutely. Yes.
Cool. Very cool.
And then there are two different collectibles. So the first collectible is your light bubble. If you shoot the light bubble and like the Tenebrus is, is nowhere near it, um, you can, you can collide with it to collect it. Um, to, to restore your ammo, um, by one. And then the other collectible is obviously the astronauts. So these astronauts that you're saving, you just have to collide with them. They'll get attached to you and then you got to bring them back to safety. One thing with, when you're saving these astronauts though, um, I think all of them will be trapped in the Tenebrus's trap, which think of, and I ha, I didn't explain this, but the Tenebrus, the way that we're kind of envisioning it is like something, think of like the symbiote in Spider-Man.
Okay.
Something slimy or, uh, just like really mysterious and, and kind of like, doesn't have a true shape or form. And it leaves behind these kind of like web-like traps all around. They're dark and black. And, um, if the player enters into one of those traps, the Tenebrus knows exactly where you are and will start chasing after you.
What I'm loving about it, James, sorry to interrupt you is like, as you describe it, it's forming a visual in my head. And then when you get to like, hey, here's what we're actually envisioning, it's already pretty aligned with what I'm picturing. So it's so cool to hear you describe it and create this image myself. And I'm excited to then see what you guys finalize. And then I'm like, just able to compare how close it was. In my head, I was going with like the enemies in Prey, the game, the mimics. Like that, just kind of black, like smoky liquid type thing or, um, Edge of Tomorrow, the little alien invaders, the film, um, same, same kind of thing, just like black and stretchy and, and kind of chaotic in its movement. And then for you to be like, yeah, like Venom, like the symbiote. And I was like, okay, we're right there. We're aligned. I like it. That's so cool.
Awesome. Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm glad we're, we're, we're on the same page here. So yeah, so speaking of the traps, if the player enters the, like I said, if the player enters the trap, the symbiote, or the symbiote. Now I'm thinking it's Venom. The Tenebrus, uh, will know exactly where you are. But also the astronauts, they're all trapped in the, in these. So if you have, if you're going to save the astronaut, you have to go through the trap. And so immediately the Tenebrus is knowing, knows that you're trying to save these astronauts. And so the only way to escape the, the, the traps, like it'll slow your movement pretty drastically. But in order to escape it, you have to use your boost to, to get out of it. And so, yeah, that's why it's super important to conserve that, um, as much as possible. Yeah. Enemy controller, we obviously need that enemy controller for the Tenebrus. It's movement, it moves around the space randomly and slowly. But it is alerted to the player if it's within proximity of the player. Or it touches one of its traps. And then when it's, when it's chasing the player, like I said, the movement speed is increased to be slightly faster than the player's normal speed. And then, uh, as it's getting closer to the base, maybe this is a, a nice to have. But as it's getting closer to the base and the light is getting brighter and brighter, maybe it slows down a bit. And then it stops completely right before reaching the base. And, um, I think it'd be like a cool, like eerie thing that like, once you reach the base, it's just kind of sitting there for a little bit, like warning you not to come back out. And then it eventually leaves and then goes back to like its different random locations that it's, uh, navigating its base. The Tenebrus, the, the only attack it has is if it collides with the player, it essentially kind of like swallows them whole. And I, I put that like, the player doesn't die as soon as it immediately touches it, but maybe like two seconds after it does to give the player enough time. Like if they have, still have boost, they can boost that, boost away. But if they don't, then obviously the loose green pops up and, and, and you're dead. Hazards, obstacles, the only things that, that we're, we're, we're thinking of are like the spaceship and the station wreckage that, um, you know, the astronaut, like everything around them is destroyed. And so that wreckage, uh, could be used to fill the space. There's large pieces that maybe block certain areas, um, that they can't, that the player can't navigate to. Or there's smaller pieces that are loose and maybe physics space that if the player collides with it, it also moves in space. Or even slows down the player. So like if the Tenebrus is chasing you and you have to go through like, uh, like an asteroid field or something like that, like it's, you've got to be very precise with your movement or you're going to slow down and, uh, the Tenebrus is going to catch up with you. So yeah, that is, that's the gameplay. Uh, should I take a pause there before we go into art direction?
We can. I mean, we've got, um, some great feedback from the chat on the Twitch side. We have FiveNax saying, and the enemy is kind of like Harry Potter to mentors and like in my head, the same kind of like wispy, smoky, liquidy darkness. Like that aligns. I, I think it kind of fits in the, the same kind of, uh, the same kind of spirit, I would say. And I'm excited to see how you guys kind of visualize it for sure. We also have Weekend on the Twitch side saying, maybe we could do a stream on how to make a good game design doc. This is really good. And I was like, okay, maybe that is something that we can kind of provide some resources for. And maybe we'll carve out some time for that in the near future as well. Cause Spirit Warrior also saying, very nice game design doc. I like that, uh, we have the Bull and Tractor Shark on, uh, the YouTube side, um, sharing some of their praises for the work that you guys have done as well. The Bull saying, I think the audio should, uh, sound trapped inside a small space, right? To kind of create that, like maybe claustrophobia. The one thing that I was thinking, and I'd love to hear both from the panel, but also from you guys watching in chat. How many games can you think of where the title of the game is based on the enemy of the game? Which I think is so cool, but how many? Like Super Mario? Cause he's murdering every, like he is, he, you are.
He's the hidden villain.
You're playing as the villain in that game. But what, can you guys think of any? I think that's awesome. There's gotta be some that I'm missing.
Technically Silent Hill, the great enemy is the location itself.
Sure, sure.
Me being single-minded.
I don't know. If you guys have some, um, throw them in the chat. I'd love to hear. FiveNax saying, most horror games, yeah, but the ones that my brain goes to immediately is a lot, a lot of locations. Or concepts, great, like Resident Evil.
Dead Space.
Yep, yep. Dead by Daylight's what I play a lot. Again, very conceptual as opposed to like the actual enemy itself. Slenderman, Slenderman's a solid one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, Grandma too. Yeah, 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 yeah.
I never played Grandma. I don't know that one.
Oh.
The Sea of Thieves, kinda. Sea of Thieves is kind of like the, the other thieves are the, the antagonists. Either way, if you guys have some more, please, uh, let us know and we're going to throw things back to James to kind of continue on here.
Yeah.
All right. So art direction. Uh, so Joy is our resident artist. And we've decided to, to go with a voxel approach. Joy is an amazing voxel artist. So I think, yeah, this is going to be awesome. And you guys are going to see that, uh, a little bit later too. So yeah, we, we listed out all of the, the different assets that we'll need. So obviously we'll need the player character, which is an astronaut. And list out some of the, the animations that they'll need, uh, like floating, boosting, shooting the bubble and dying. Non-play, non-play.
There's a cat. There's a cat on screen.
He was just yelling into the mic. So there you go. Cat signing. Sorry, Jace.
No, no, all good. Uh, so yeah, non-playable characters. So we have the various astronauts. So again, as mentioned, these astronauts, you'll eventually find out and spoiler alert, you know, if you wanted to come into this game blind, sorry. You'll find out that these astronauts are future versions of you. And so we have different, different versions, uh, different ages. Uh, the ages we were still playing around with, there might be younger ones, um, whatever. But basically, yeah, there's different ages. We need the Tenebrus, obviously, and the animations, like an idle slither float fat, slow and fast. Animation for when it's devouring the light bubbles and then killing the player. Or, you know, these could be the same. I don't know. We'll figure that out. Uh, and then background assets. So planet, um, I think, you know, just the kind of show that we're in space. Uh, I think it'd be kind of cool to have a planet. Uh, and then stars. And one cool idea, um, that I believe Sarah came up with is, uh, like having a gradient for, uh, I think you're going to do this with, using shaders.
Yeah. I think that might've been Joy's idea, actually. I don't remember.
Sarah was going to implement it and rock, which is awesome.
Yeah. But basically the idea is that the stars will be brighter, closer to the safe zone. But as it's further away and closer to the Tenebrus and where it's, it's located, the stars will start to fade. And so it'll be really dark where, where the Tenebrus is, um, further away. So I think that's a kind of cool, like eerie, um, environmental, um, aesthetic that we can add. Uh, and then assets for the environment. So we'll need like a space station, spaceship debris, um, both large and small pieces. Same thing with like asteroids and rocks, uh, varying shapes and sizes. The Tenebrus traps. So I'm thinking like, yeah, they're dark, gooey, web-like traps. And then the safe zone. So we'll obviously have the light bubble that surrounds the, the safe zone. That will expand every time you, you bring in an, an astronaut. And then we'll, we'll also have a platform where the astronauts will stand on to show you that like, these are how many astronauts you need to, to save. And then, um, they'll stand on a part of the platform and you'll see, yeah, you need to save that many.
Cool.
Uh, and then the space capsule of when, where the astronaut came about.
Which if I'm not mistaken, Joy, you've already created and we'll be taking a look at it in just a moment.
So many things, like actually like the, uh, the surprise of this is actually, I, there's actually more assets than even the team knows about.
Damn.
Oh.
It's equipped with surprises.
Someone was inspired.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I made a bunch of stuff. I'm really excited, but like, uh, to start with, we, uh, have an inspo board. Shall we take a look at that?
Yeah, let's definitely take a look at that.
Boom.
Okay. All right. So we got some stuff. Um, so I'm going to start with the inspo board and then I will talk about like the, um, some of the design work that we did, which is existing above, but like, you know, when, when you're talking about space and you're thinking about space, um, you gotta, you gotta get some space related goods on, on the inspo board. So I got some conceptual stuff for our astronaut dude. We'll definitely have the opportunity here today to kind of customize it. And like, if y'all have like suggestions as we're going, definitely shout them out in the chat where we're at that point. You know, we've got, uh, a capsule. I have a little beta capsule for us to be checking out. And then, uh, as James mentioned, there's a lot of debris. Kind of the implication here is that something terrible happened to this astronaut ship. And so there's a lot of debris out in the space field. So kind of inspired there. And, uh, I actually made some of these pieces. Yeah, 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 yeah. So that was what I was working on. And then also like just generalized space themes, like the horror of space. You know, there's some like really beautiful, like nebulas, galaxies, stars and stuff, but like objectively, when you look at some of the things in space, it's like real, like existential horror. Like, hey, this kind of looks like an eye. That's incredible, but also really fricking scary. So like, these are the things that really inspired me. Um, and then also, um, we got some major inspiration for our platform. Where our little space dudes are going to be sitting. So this is kind of where the, uh, the idea came from. So it's going to be like really kind of like artistically inspired. I mean, obviously it's going to be artistic, but like, like there is kind of like some symbolism and stuff in it. I don't know. It's going to be great, guys. That's, that's what I'm good at. So this is the inspo board. And then yesterday we had a meeting to talk about like cameras and stuff. And, um, behold, the Renaissance level design that we have, uh, let me, let me zoom in. So it's real clear. I know that like, of like.
It's going to be artistic.
Beautiful.
Some of the, uh, the paint, the paint lines might, uh, be up for interpretation, but I, I think everybody can fully understand what we're talking about from this sketch. But no, like the big thing here is that originally like we had been talking about isometric, um, which we, uh, have sketched out here. But the thing with isometric is it actually kind of takes away from the existential horror of space because you have a better understanding of the space that you're in. So that's why we ended up switching over to the top-down camera, especially with that kind of zooming in and then zooming out as you get further from your base. The idea is that when you are close in with the camera around your base, you kind of feel like, okay, yeah, we're in a sea of darkness and space. But like, you know, I'm under control here. But that is, it zooms out further, more of your screen is dedicated to this big space and less of it's dedicated to you, which kind of reinforces the idea that space is infinite and vast and you are just a blip on the screen of existence. And so we have better control over that with our camera work if we go from that angle. We did some like really in-depth UI design yesterday. Like this is exactly what we can expect to see on screen. You could see our lovely boost meter and our light, it's straight up there. You could see the vision, I'm sure. But, um,
I see it.
Yeah. Yeah. And also like, I think we could all say that this is the best representation of the Tenebrus.
That looks like a small T-Rex to me. That's where my, that's where my brain goes.
And what is scarier than a space dinosaur?
Venom Rex is a real thing, just so we're on the same page.
Hold up. Space dinosaur. Has anybody done that yet? Write that down.
Cut the feed. Nobody needs to know about this. It's ours.
This stream is over. We've got work to do now. Um, but yeah, so like, this is kind of where we're at right now. I think what's really important, um, ridiculousness aside, I want to reinforce the idea that, um, when you are designing, uh, especially for a game jam, but really for anything, um, when it comes to game development is quick iteration of ideas trumps beautiful stuff. Like, yeah, this like in the real world is very ugly, but what it allowed us to do is get concepts down quickly. Agree on, um, ideas, make sure that we all were on the same page. And even though this visually makes not very much sense, I want to do a side-by-side later. So I can kind of show you like, hey, do you see the vision where we ended up versus this? Because you're going to see something. They'll, it'll be clear. Well, you'll be able to interpret. But as ugly as this is right now, it was a really valuable resource. And the fact that we were all able to get on the, uh, same Figma board and work together for this was so important. So yeah, embrace ugly art. That, that's really the, the main takeaway here. Yeah.
Love it. I do want to give you guys a heads up on the time. We've got a little less than 40 minutes. And I know that we have some things that we want to accomplish live. So just, just to keep you in the loop on it.
Yeah. So, um, I think we've, uh, we've got the board pretty much covered now. So I think we could, uh, continue on to the next step.
Sure. Enjoy. We're going to, uh, continue with your, uh, screen share. So if you want to, uh, reconfigure, you are more than welcome to. Joy's got, uh, surprises for us, which I'm very excited about.
I'm very excited.
Everything Joy, this is, not only is it a surprise, it's a surprise that it's a surprise. It's not like Joy was like, hey, I'm going to bring you surprises. It was just, hey, I'm going to show you a capsule only for us to arrive and Joy to say, not just that, we have other things.
There's so much more.
Joy, are you, uh, all set for us to switch over?
I am ready.
Sweet.
Okay. So welcome to Magic of Voxel. So for those of you that aren't familiar, Magic of Voxel is a free, open source voxel editing program. That's really easy to use, really have enjoyed it for the years that I've been using it. Highly recommend it. It's constantly being updated. Um, and it's including things that like you need for development that like people have been asking for. So like, I didn't even realize until I opened it up recently and updated it. There's an animation tool now, and that's what I've been loving forever because I've been like keyframing animations by creating different files and like subtly changing the, uh, the, like, which is intense. And now I don't have to do that anymore. Anyway, so Magic of Voxel, highly recommend. You will see me modeling it in a little bit, but I want to quickly go over the stuff that I made for this game. So starting off, um, we've got a number of asteroids.
Oh, cool.
About this. So these asteroids are made to be like looking visually different from all angles. So even though there's only five of them, um, we'll be able to make it seem like there's more. We've got our capsule.
Oh, wicked.
Rotating around in space. And we have our transporter.
Whoa.
Love this.
That's so good.
Is, um, basically when you come back with your astronaut, an astronaut will appear on the ground. The final spot is for you. So when you get the last astronaut, you'll hop on as well. And we can make these glowy immunity, obviously. So yep, beat me up Scotty in the chat. You did the reference.
Yes.
And so the thing that I did not mention to you guys is I already got to start on debris. And so the thing that I did not mention to you guys is I already got to start on debris. So we've got solar panels. We've got uh something from the space.
Something.
You know.
I'm not a scientist.
Yeah.
I'm an artist, not a scientist. Um, we've got some uh some other metal-y stuff.
Table.
Yeah, and then we got an I-beam or an H-beam depending. Um, and then we've got like an air tank. So just a few extra things, but we got them.
This is awesome.
Yeah, so you know, we got some pieces. Um, so these have all been added into the Unity project. Um, which we already have going. Um, so yeah, so what do we? The space coffee table, yes.
The one question that I have.
Yeah.
What is that one that's that's labeled Doom?
I was looking at the one. What's what's the one labeled Bro?
Okay, let's start with Doom. Um, so do, because Magic of Voxel is an amazing tool. Um, it actually ships with a couple sample models for you to check out and learn about. So Doom.
Yeah, it's the Doom guy sprite.
Oh, no way. It's genuine Doom.
Yeah, so you could actually go through and learn about how this is all set up. Um, by just checking out and this ships with Magic of Voxel. Um, and also just a side note, another thing that you could do with Magic of Voxel that's so cool. If you have some sprite art that you have in a ping format. Um, you could just drag and drop it into Magic of Voxel and it'll voxelize your stuff for you.
Whoa.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I have seen people asking, and we've been linking it in the chat as well. If you guys want to go check out this tool for yourself. We have the bull saying, I always find the coolest tools here. Um, we had people, uh sleepy space loss saying this tool is amazing. Thank you for sharing. So if you guys want to go to uh around using this tool, go and check it out.
Yeah, and um just want to flag, like I said, I've been using this for years. The last like three games that I made, I made using this entirely. And like, it's such a good tool, you guys. And the fact that it's free is just so ridiculous for for to me. Because I would definitely pay for this tool. So love it, love it, love it, love it. So um, you guys want to see how to like make stuff in it?
Show us. So.
We're just gonna skip over Bro.
Yeah, no, bro.
So.
I mean, if you want to, it's fine. I know we don't have time, but.
No, like full disclosure, like Bro is what I practice the astronaut for, so I don't want to show him off. But yeah, like when I downloaded the new version of Magic of Voxel onto my work computer, I'm like, okay, let's take some time and make sure I remember all the. Like all the tools and stuff. And so I just quickly modeled out the astronaut. But I don't want to make it seem like I've already got it prepared. Like I'm going to be modeling the real astronaut on stream. So yeah, that that's why. But yeah, let's uh let's model something, guys.
Ooh.
Exciting.
So I'm going to create a new scene. I'm not gonna save Doom guy. So it's gonna start out with a uh box in the color that uh is selected. I'm actually gonna go over to palette zero. So these are all the colors that you could use to make your voxels. The reason why I'm working with palette zero is because I modeled everything else using this palette, which means that all models in Unity right now. Are using a texture that is one pixel by two hundred and fifty-six pixels wide. Everything. So a tiny little texture, texture for all of the models that I just showed you, which is efficient. Um, but anyway.
I was wondering what that file was.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's 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 the textures for the game.
I was wondering.
Uh, yeah, but so you could start with a whole cube and carve into it, but I actually like starting with a clear scene and then designing. So I'm going to start with the most important part of an astronaut, in my opinion, because it's most identifiable, which is the head. So I'm going to make a little sphere for the head. Now, the thing about Magical Voxel, and I'm sure there's actually a way to not have this happen. Um, when, let me make this a bigger size. When you first create a voxel, it's kind of halfway through the scene. And I'm certain there's a way to make it appear like higher up, but it's, I I don't know what it is. So here's my little hack. I am going to make a little box and I'm going to create a little tower. And uh then I'm going to create the head for for our guy. So I'm going through a lot of tools very quickly. Um, and that's kind of to be aware of time. Because if I go through like explaining how all of this happened, it would take forever. Uh, maybe that's another stream, but one way or another. So I'm just creating a platform and.
Lollipop.
Yeah, it's a lollipop.
We're done. Put it in.
Yep, there he is. Now I'm just gonna erase by doop. Oh, I need to erase, not attach. There we go. Um, and then I'm going to drag it up and kind of center it. And I'm realizing that the scene is a little, oops, little small. So I'm actually gonna come up here and increase the height of the scene by two. So I can make it a little bit taller.
We got a tall astronaut, obviously.
We got a tall boy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then I'm going to increase the width by a bit as well, because I'm actually gonna T-pose this guy. And I made it. There we go. Um, cool. Alright, so here is our astronaut's head. Uh, let's create a little bit of a visor. There we go. So that is our kind of point reference.
I'm seeing Wheatley right now from Portal.
Yeah, exactly. There we go. Game done. Um.
Ship it.
I am going to uh go back to the color that we had before. And now I'm going to pull down a neck. And then let's create some shoulders here.
Broad shoulders.
Too big.
Broadest, exactly.
Broadest shoulder. Um, so you can see it goes a little bit wild, but you could really just start rapidly sculpting. And also, we could be just doing this all in the half and I could duplicate it over later. But I actually prefer kind of moving around and sort of like zbrush style sculpting, but with voxels. So now I'm gonna pull this down and let's give him a little bit bigger shoulder. And let's do this. And this is a hundred percent all by vibes. Um, there is no plan here and it's really just how does it feel in the moment? And yeah, that's really, really how you make stuff in Magic of Voxel. And I think I'm going to give our dude a torso.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe that's a little tall, so I'll shorten that up a little bit. That's good. And let's give him some volume. And.
Joy, um, you keep, you keep going. But multiple people have called out that this is like Bob Ross with voxels. And I have said in the past that a art project follow-along is definitely something we've considered as a livestream. And you also just keep, you you are embodying Bob Ross vibes with like the, you know, we're just painting on vibes. And like, just whatever you feel in the moment. So maybe this is something that we do need to do as a stream in future. Where it's like, we're gonna set up a project and everyone can follow along. It's open source, it's free software. It's quick and easy to to install, so maybe that's something that we should explore.
Yeah, you say the word.
And Dustin Taub, uh, I think is dubbing you Voxel Ross.
Voxel Ross is solid. Or Bob Vox is also very.
Bob Vox.
Very good.
Bob Vox, my goodness.
I'm gonna show you how to duplicate the arm here in a second. So we got our little arm. And again, this is all by vibes and I could change them later. It's so easy. So I'm going to, let's imagine, oops, let's imagine a hand. Imagine dragons. There we go. Let's make it a little bit.
His show is literally called The Joy of Painting. Is that real?
Oh, my God. Uh, so th- there is a joy of cooking there. Yeah, Bob Ross is joy of painting. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Bob Vox, the joy of gaming as Strophyum.
Oh, man. So.
Solid.
Should I share a secret with you guys?
You're actually Bob Ross.
Uh, yeah, straight up. Um, I am Bob Ross.
I knew it.
Way. Um, so there is an alternative universe, possibly in the future. Where um I do YouTube and um the the name of the YouTube channel is The Joy of Game Development. So, there you go.
Counterpoint, instead of competing with me, uh, and making me sad inside, we just give you a recurring segment, a recurring show on the Unity channels.
Oh, my God, like you just sit here and like just model all day, guys. New career. Um, this is what I, yeah. So just just sculpting all day. Um, yeah, like vibes are immaculate, I think, is where we're getting at in here. And actually, a little bit bigger. Um, yeah, so like, how how's everybody's day going?
Listen, you can just keep going and we can talk about other things.
Yeah, like, talk, guys, like.
I have a question for you, uh, Joy. To make the environment, do we want to use Pro Builder? I'm thinking of getting it because I want a cone and I don't want to make one in Blender.
Yeah, straight up. Like, I love a good Pro Builder.
I'm gonna download Pro Builder and put it in my branch and then I'll merge it into your branch once I'm.
Merge.
Do that branch merge.
A heck, yeah.
Yeah.
If you guys had the option, the opportunity, if someone approached you and said, hey, we're gonna send you to space, would you go?
Nah.
That's a tough one.
That is a tough one.
Chad, I'd love to hear from you too. If someone said, hey, all expense, all expenses paid trip to space.
I would if I had nothing tying me back to Earth.
Sure.
If I had, for whatever reason, if I had no family, no nothing, nothing tying me back to Earth. I'd probably say yes. Like, why not?
Already great answers on the Twitch side. Uh, TwoBob says, again, Jack says, Jack Dragonbean says, can't game in space? We'll say that you can. We'll say that you can, because honestly, I think that would be an influence in my uh decision-making as well.
Yeah, I'd absolutely bring my Switch, bring, you know, Steam Deck, everything.
People saying yes. For me, I would be too overwhelmed immediately.
I feel like the problem with space is that you have to be up there for like months at a time.
Yeah.
I would get bored after like a week. I'd be like, oh, wow, the Earth, that's so cool. And then after the sixtieth time of looking at it, I'd be like, alright.
That's why you bring games.
Your photo reel is just full of pictures of Earth and you're like, well, I'm like, what else do I need up here?
Exactly. Like, I I can't even like go for a walk.
A spacewalk, though.
But that's not the same, you know?
I guess that's true.
We have brain and steam who's already on their way. They're like, yep, I'm gone, go.
So when you say you have the opportunity to go to space, is it literally just to travel up like and you're hanging up above Earth? Or are you actually like traveling around in space?
We'll send you to the moon. You can.
I've been down to the moon. I enjoy a good moon. Um.
If I could be up there for like a day, that'd be pretty sick, but after a day, I would get so tired of it.
So we have the opportunity to check out the dark side of the moon.
Uh, yeah, you can do whatever you want when you're there. We'll equip you. We'll give you uh, we'll give you the tools.
So when I was researching images and stuff, I discovered that for like millionaires, there is like. A balloon-based space travel thing that takes place over the course of, I think, twelve hours. Where you go up in a balloon and you actually get to go to space and just take a bunch of pictures and have a cocktail and a meal. And then they send you back home. Um, so if you have a spare hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for twelve hours. Um, there you go. You could do it.
It's easy money.
I would say that's that's less expensive than I would have expected a trip to space.
I would agree.
I would agree. I don't, I don't, I don't have a concept. I'm not a millionaire. I don't have a concept of of mass amounts of money. You're right, for twelve hours, that sounds like not a good expenditure of of money, but to go to space.
That's the thing. Yeah, like being able to like check it out, but also like, I just worry. Like, what if the balloon pops? I don't know. I have a lot of concerns about what might happen.
Yeah. Um, FiveNax calling out a spare hundred and twenty-five K or a spare balloon. What if we make our own?
Didn't somebody try to do that? Am I remembering the early two thousands correctly?
I'm sure.
Was it, I I felt like it was like a, not even, not even ten years ago.
Yeah. Go, so I am just duplicating and moving over. Go.
Dustin Taub in the YouTube chat says, according to my Pro Builder skills, the Earth is flat and square. We'll get, it is something that we've talked about, bringing some some members of the Pro Builder team on to uh, to have them show off and teach you guys some stuff. So we'll see. No guarantees, but we'll we'll help you fix the Earth.
Okay, so this is the Earth. It is flat and square. That is a deep cut for anybody who's been on the internet for a while. So here's, here's a guy. Um, and let me go ahead and make a pack. Doop, doop, doo. A little base here. And then let's pull out this base. And let's make it a little bit wider. He needs a jetpack, guys.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Because how else is he going to jetpack across space without a jetpack? These are the things that you have to think about as a game designer. Um, let's make it a little bit bigger.
I love this song.
Oh, I just realized, what if that's, that's probably copyrighted. Uh, sorry.
No problem.
Bob muted.
I don't want, there's no offense, no shade here, Joy, but I don't know that that rendition was enough to get us a DMCA strike.
No, straight up, like, that's fair, because like often I'll be like humming a song and I'll be like, man, what is this song? Hey, guys, you know what this song is? And then they'll be like, we have no idea what s- sound you are making. Um, I've also been told that I cannot make the so- sound of um. What are those noise makers that you hear at uh?
Boo Boo Zillas?
Yeah, like, I think I do a really great job, but I've been told that I have in fact wrong about that. Um.
Can I just say how impressed I'm I that I am with Jackson, just knowing exactly what you were going to say with Boo Boo Zillas?
Yeah.
Description. You're like, you know those sounds that you hear at, he was like, oh, Boo Boo Zillas.
I don't know how I got there either. I'm just.
That's true, though, like mad respect. Thank you for understanding my my thought process. But yeah, so like, brr, 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 brr. Like, that's it. That's what they sound like. And like, I've been told that, no, that is in fact not what they sound like. And they compare me to Ross Geller with the wachah from uh Friends.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Also think that he is, he is correct. So I don't know. I have problems identifying sound and replicating them, I guess is the takeaway from this.
Um, looking at our time on the board here, we've got about twenty minutes left. I think we can kind of do a number of different things. We can either speedrun the rest of this and try and get it to Sarah to do some of the VFX. However, I know we were already in the process of changing the approach for what Sarah was going to do today. Do we want to just simplify and have this be our priority? And then the new uh objective for today is to finish this off and make sure that we establish Sarah has it. And is ready to get started on it? Or do we, yeah, kind of what is, what do we feel in here?
Well, um, we can actually do the the cooking show thing where I now pull out Bro. And then send that over to Unity. How do we feel about that?
Sarah, how do you feel about like a fifteen-minute time crunch for you to add pixel effects to a jetpack?
I'll try it.
I mean, it's up to you. If you feel like that's real tight and.
That sounds like a challenge.
Okay, I like that. You lit up. As soon as, I was nervous. I was like, oh, sorry, I don't want to put you out and you just.
Alright, so we're gonna go.
I don't even care if I mess it up.
Wow. That's great. Honestly, you were right there as well.
You fitted it with your brain. That's crazy.
Alright, so uh for exporting, you just come down to this export tab and you select what export you want. I'm gonna choose uh OBJ. And then I'm just going to export it. And I'm gonna change it from asteroid to, or Bro to Astro. That is not uh Astro, dude.
Okay, if it makes you feel better about your typing, um, the pop-up box does not show on the screenshot.
Oh, oh, good, 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 good. Okay, cool. And so I'm gonna actually gonna stop sharing because I need to drop this into the uh, the thing.
So what tools are you using to make sure that everyone, what's our version control approach essentially?
You're using GitHub Desktop. Um, so it is.
Wait, are you putting this in Git? Are you putting it in Slack?
Oh, Git.
Okay.
Sorry, cuz uh I uh.
Is that supposed to reveal our communications? I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. It's just that like my computer is a little sad and I can't have Slack open with everything else when we're streaming.
Wow.
Um, so I'm gonna go in and I'm gonna drop this in the meshes folder.
Should I show off how I like merge your branch into my branch or should I just do it off?
Ooh, uh, yeah, however you want to.
We have your screen share up, so we can just switch to it for you, Sarah. You just let us know.
I've been like working while while Joy has been modeling, so I can do a quick show off.
And a little preview.
I'm I'm sure you guys. I'm, I'm sure you guys have been seeing me like frantically write code.
Great. Honestly, in terms of here, you've sold it. Like there was no like even though you may have felt it, you did not show it. You did great.
I have a great poker face. It's from playing Blatro.
Oh, good. Oh, nice. Yeah. You gotta bluff in Blatro. That's a big part of it.
Oh, yeah.
Don't bluff. It hurts. Um, Dustin Taub in the YouTube chat has a question for Joy. Have you ever done animations with this voxel tool? If so, are those exportable to bring into Unity? And I know you mentioned they maybe just added functionality to it.
Yeah, so I am so stoked on this. Um, hold on just one second. So I could say to Sarah, I have pushed. Uh, I don't have Unity open right now, so it's just the OBJ. Um, but I'll add the material on later.
I'll figure it out.
Yeah, yeah. I'm actually going to briefly share again. Um, let me pull up Magical Voxel one more time because like I really want to emphasize how amazing this is. Also weirdest, okay. Hopefully I'll be able to do this. Um, for some reason, and this is the weirdest thing ever, if I try and launch Magical Voxel on the wrong screen, it will freeze. And again, I guarantee you, this is a my computer problem. Um.
Just for the sake of time.
Yeah. Yeah.
Like Sarah's already like game. I don't know. She's game for like creating an animation and, or you know, VFX.
Yeah, Sarah, sure. You do your thing and I will talk. You're, you're getting.
Sarah, your screen is live.
Dang, okay. Uh, real quick, what have I been doing? Load faster. Please.
Fight your computer right now.
Oh my.
You're okay. It's alright.
Okay, well, it's good.
Progress bar. That's great.
It's almost there.
It's right there. Perfect.
Oh wait, time's going up. Oh wait, four, 16. Oh, is it supposed to go up or go down?
That looks like busy four.
Great. Amazing. What?
Repair.
Ignore it. It's fine. I don't care. So enemy has field of view cone. I made this in Pro Builder. Wow, it can do that. It can do that. Wow. Um, look at all of my amazing code that I've been writing to make the thing work. I'm using a finite state machine. Pro Training is going to have a course on this very soon. Keep an eye out. Um, what was I doing? Oh, right, 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 right. The, yes. So, uh, in order to merge Joy's branch, which I believe has the model now into my branch. I think I, I think I right-clicked. No. I did it. I did it this morning. I did it this morning.
We're there.
I don't use like GitHub Desktop. I, oh yeah, choose a branch to merge into my dev branch. I'm going to choose. This branch is up to date with me. Fetch. Maybe it is not up to date.
Which is good, because, uh, it's Two Bob that was asking about, um, does Git manage objects? Nicely, branch merging is of interest.
Yes, create a merge commit. So it's going to merge Joy's object into my branch, so I won't lose my work. I'm going to push that merge. And now you can see Joy's change on my branch. So I'm going to wait till it does that. Great. And now if I look in the meshes folder, there it is.
Whoa.
But that's okay.
That's great.
Alright, um, particles. Yes. So we want his, uh, jetpack to have a little particle effect. I'm doing this completely blind. I have, I have not pre-scripted the particle effect. So you guys are going to see, you're, you're all going to lose my mind with me. Um, so we have particle system added to the Astro dude as a child. I click on it, it plays. It's crazy. So the next thing I'm going to do is make sure looping is on, because we want the particle effect to loop continuously. Um, it actually looks like it's going the right way. It's going back from the astronaut's Z axis. Uh, the Z axis determines what, uh, direction the object is facing, whether it's facing forward or backward. So right now it's going backward on the Z axis. Wait, no, it's not. It's going, we'll fix that later. We don't have time. Um, it's fine. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to maybe make more particles emit. That's fun. And then I'm also going to change the shape of the, actually, I think that shape works for like smoke coming out of a jetpack. I don't know. Joy, you're an artist. What do you think? Think that works?
Yeah, I think it's great.
Perfect.
Particles come out of things.
True.
We want to tighten the cone so that it, it's more closer together.
We can do that. So I can adjust the radius a little bit so that it's a little tighter. Would you look at that?
This is what we call tightening up the graphics.
Oh, love it. While you're doing that, I want to welcome in our raiders over on the Twitch side. A massive thank you. Uh, to Hill, Hillfort Games raiding in with their 49 viewers. Welcome on into this stream. My name's Jackson. I'm a community manager here. I'm joined by the squad, uh, that is currently, um, working through a global game jam, game jam. And we are in a working session right now. We have created a space themed game off of the theme this year, which is Bubble. Um, and we have a, uh, kind of space horror. We've built our astronaut and we are adding jetpacks to it right now. Thank you guys again very much for that raid. Welcome on in, everybody. Uh, we are on the official Unity channel. We are here every Thursday and occasional Tuesdays. We've been working with this team to create this game over the last couple of weeks. And next Tuesday, we will be showing off our final game. Uh, and if you are already watching in the YouTube, or sorry Twitch chat here, go check out Hillfort Games. I've been, uh, in their channel a number of times and they are making a very cool pixel, uh, art style zombie game and I'm all about it. So right now, um, we're going to throw things back over to Sarah who's working hard on our jetpack.
Thank you, Hillfort Games. You're a real one. Um, anyways, we can hit this box, no, size over lifetime. And what we can do is we can adjust the size of the particles over their lifetime. And if you want to adjust the lifetime, you can come up here and set the start lifetime. Um, I want to make the particles not live for so long. So I'm going to set it to like two. There we go. So they're only going to live for two seconds. And I'm actually going to adjust this curve double. Oh no, it's down here. Need to bring this up. And I'm going to actually reverse this, just quick and dirty, so that they get smaller over time. So it's like a cool fade out. Wow. I'll right-click and just clamp this. I'm lazy, so I'm going to do it this way. No one, no one get mad at me. Um, do you look at that? How nice. Um, now I would imagine this is going to be kind of like a smoky effect. So I probably will need like another material for this, um, which I'll do later. But this is pretty much the basics of how, um, our particle system works. I can also, oh yeah, each of our particles can emit particles.
Oh, cool.
Um, do we want to do anything else?
I just want to. I just want to shout out in the chat that over on the YouTube side, all of us are collectively 12. Uh, and, uh, yeah, that, that's it.
Great.
Oh my God.
Uh, I was going to ask about the.
It's coming out of his jetpack.
The functionality of the jetpack. Uh, are there two, like I saw, was it, uh, it's Bob, it's Two Bob? On chat mentioned maybe having two cones, like are there two, uh, what, what, what do you call that?
Yeah, like two thrusters.
Two, two thrusters.
Yeah, thrusters.
You know what?
And also do we want the, 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 the particles not coming out at the Z axis, but maybe at the Y axis?
So it's like pushing him.
Oh, 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 I get what you're saying. I get what you're saying. Okay. So in that case, because the particle system is on a game object, I can just
woo.
boink, look at that. And now, this is the quick and dirty way. This is not production ready. Don't do this if you're making a production ready game.
But I mean, you're in a game jam. Like this might be the way that people in a game jam are like, I need to cobble this together in a minute. Let's do it. So yeah, I think you're giving exactly what we need.
There we go. They're, they're going to run at the same time somehow.
Sarah, a question, a question from user not taken over on Twitch. What option makes particles emit more particles?
What option makes particles emit more particles? That is a great question. Uh, it is the, that's actually a good question. I believe it's max particles. And I believe if you turn up the, oh my God, my brain is.
Is, is it not what you just mentioned, um, the option, if you scroll down? Uh, what was it? The?
Sub emitters?
Yeah, sub emitters.
Well, you can, but like actually if you go into the main, like, um, the max rate and then like, also if you increase lifetime, there'll be more.
Oh, right. Yeah. The, if you have, uh, more, higher maximum amount of particles and you increase the lifetime of the particles, there will be more particles. Wow. I've done it. Um, I'm going to work more on this later, just in the interest of time, but basics of particle system. Uh, we have the enemy with the thing set up. It has a script. Doesn't work yet. Don't ask me to show it. I can't.
No, this is great. I'll be completely honest, when I was like, I was trying to be really considerate. I was like, oh, Sarah probably needs a little while to get this done. So like, I don't want to put the pressure. Let's, let's give them the out. Let's give Sarah the out. And then you hopped in and got this done in like 10 minutes. So I'm thoroughly impressed. Very, very well done.
Yay.
Yeah. So this is a great, I mean, we, we checked all the boxes that we wanted to in today's stream. Um, we went through and showcased everything that we worked on so far, caught everybody up with the game design doc and the inspiration board. Then we went through and created an astronaut. We talked a little bit about version control and how the team is using it to collaborate. And now we've gotten the particle effects at least started, um, which is absolutely fantastic. Um, of course, again, thank you to this team, the, the members in this room, getting it done, achieving and living the dream right now. Uh, I'm super grateful, uh, that you guys agreed to be a part of this. I know it's time consuming. Um, but I can see the passion that you guys carry for game creation. So, um, it means a lot to me. Uh, how are you guys feeling after what we've worked on so far today?
Feeling really good.
Feeling good. I'm going to, as soon as the stream ends, I'm going to go back into the, the code mines.
You're, you're focused, you're fixated and you're driven. I appreciate it.
Yearning for the code mines.
I love it.
Nice.
Um, so with that, we'll, we'll kind of wrap it up here. You guys have, uh, a lot more of your own time in the next couple of days here to get this done. Coming back next Tuesday, that's January 28th at 9:00 AM. We'll have the whole team back together again. Hopefully Kirk will be able to join us. And we'll be showing off the full game, everything that you guys have worked to accomplish, to achieve, to put together. Um, I'm going to put that link in the chat as well, so that you guys are easily able to hop into the YouTube channel. Make sure to hit that notification bell, throw a thumbs up on there. Any of that good stuff helps me personally, also this community, which we would love to see grow and, uh, expand into something absolutely beautiful, which it already is, just more of the beauty, you know what I mean? Uh, aside from that, you can always connect with people in the Discord and discussions pages. Um, of course, we had people asking about where can they find team members? Where can they find collaborators? Those would be a great place for you guys to start. Go and check that out. And last but not least, before we bid you adieu, there is a survey that I'm putting in both Twitch and YouTube chats right now. If you've not already, this survey is four questions. It will take you three minutes. You can hop in there. It's about these live streams. We're doing them every Thursday and the occasional ad hoc Tuesday. We're trying to bring you more content that you guys want to see. So you'll see some questions in there about how, uh, experienced a dev you are, uh, how much you pay attention to the chat, how much you're engaged in the chat, and what type of content you want to see more of. It would help me immensely in guiding how we plan out this stream and build out this community space for all of you. I want to go around the horn one more time. Sarah, Joy, James, thank you all so very much for being here. We'll see you all again on Tuesday. I'm going to absolutely look forward to it. Thank you to everybody who's worked to make this possible. Thank you to the producer behind the scenes, saving our bacon at least once tonight as well. James, question or waving?
Do you want to share the link to the game jam tutorial?
Yes, absolutely. I believe we put it in earlier, but if you guys would like some information about where to get started with your own game jams, there is a learn, uh, dot unity.com resource that we put in the chat for you guys right now. So head on in there and, uh, learn all about it, especially if you're looking to start your first jam. You can also use, uh, some of the resources we've created in the live stream in the last week as well. Uh, but that is a fantastic resource for you over at learn dot unity.com. And with that, everybody, um, we're going to bid you adieu. We will see you again next Tuesday. Please come and hang out. We're going to showcase our game and talk all through the ups and downs of this process. Until we see you again next time, everybody. My name's Jackson. Have a great rest of your day.